If anybody has a comment, come to the podium, state your name and address. You have three minutes and direct your comments to the board and not to the audience. Anyone? Nope? Okay. Next thing I open the public hearing for accepting the library grant. Haley, do you want to?
I would love to. Hi, nice to meet you John, my name is Haley and I'm the library director. So we, I am thrilled and excited and very happy that we are one of the few libraries that have had all three rounds of the LTC, Libraries Transforming Communities Grants for Accessibility. So we have just been awarded the maximum again of $20,000. It's for, it's for our ADA compliant ramp. It's to go towards that, hoping that along with doing the vestibule and everything that's going with it, that we can put that. It's specifically for the ramp, however, it is one of the grants that if, if we have our community conversation, which is part of the grant acceptance, if people with disabilities have a different idea for the grant and they want us to do something different for accessibility, then this is the type of grant that can be changed if, if the voice says so. So $20,000 and I'd love to, for you guys to accept it, please.
Any questions, Mr. Bullock?
No questions.
Any questions from the audience? Twenty months going twice. Right. So, I move to accept a $20,000 grant from the American Library Association to be used toward improving services, facilities, and programs for people with disabilities in the town. Rob, second.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is common at this point, trying to get up to speed a little bit, being a retread selectman at this point. And I understand is that you want to rebuild the ramps on the outside, right, for access?
Absolutely.
Is there gonna be a roof over it or not?
So we're in the middle of, of phase four. Is that we in phase four? Of, phase four of, of building a vestibule. So the hope is to have the vestibule and there's no design yet, so we're still in the design process. I'm not sure if that design will encompass a roof over it or if it won't encompass a roof. We're literally in the beginning, planning stages where we don't have a, a, a fully developed plan yet. But the, the, the grant is to, we do have a ramp right now, but it's not to code. So the plan is to just get it to code.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
Yeah.
That's it. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
And I close the public hearing for accepting the library grant. Next, Mr. Mark Nelson.
Yes. So I'm here to, put a request in to remove the shag bark hickory tree that is by the library entrance, it's one of the subterranean library. This is in conjunction with the solar grant that was proved in March, or sorry, earlier, it's not March, but was proved earlier this year. The only logical place for solar on the library is the southern roof, the roofs are facing toward the south. That, that tree would make solar, not unfeasible, but certainly unproductive if you didn't take that tree out of there. Talked it over with, with Don Quigley, who of course is a certified forester, he says those, those trees are dime a dozen, nothing sacred about a shag bark hickory. We also have the added benefit in the removal of that tree is that you clean up a safety issue there. Shag, shag barks drop a lot of hickory nuts and a lot of crummy bark down there where the, where the ADA ramp is. And so he's constant policing in those times of year when that's happening. So that's it. I mean, I, I don't think we necessarily have to have it stumped. We could probably just have it removed, but eventually it would get stumped out too with that vestibule project as, as, and if that goes forward. But if we leave it stumped there, so it's, it's fine. But we'd just like to piggyback on the town's requirements contract they have with the Ryan tree and have the Ryan people swing by at their leisure, it's not an emergency. We still have to get the RFP out for the solar project. That's pretty much all I've got there.
This is the tree to the left of the front, right?
It is the only tree, there's some, there's some shrubs there, Scott, but it's the, it's the tree, right? You're pretty much dead smack in that square that, that defines the, the entrance way.
To the right of the ramp, if you're going up the ramp, to the left, if you're going upstairs.
It's, it's about 50 foot tall, I checked it out, it's, I might be being generous there.
Okay.
And, and, you know, I, I know there'll be people who don't want any tree to go in ever, especially if it's a live tree, and I get that, and I understand that in the vestibule project, we, to come, there will be some landscaping pieces to that project that will, will recover something planted there that makes it look good and, and does what a plant is supposed to do, and it won't get tall enough to shade any solar panels on that roof.
Is, is he planning also to take down those pine trees and back to the?
Not in this particular effort, although I do know that Mr. Bullock and the Ryan Tree Service are anxious to get there immediately, like, I think maybe tomorrow morning.
We are.
And remove the tree.
It was a targeted opportunity for them, they, they will fit us in where they're, but I want a little notice so Haley could at least steer the people to the other door for that day.
Yeah, I think they would anticipate being done before the library opens.
Oh, they'll be able to do it, right, that's.
Sorry, Steve did say if, if it's approved that they would come in the morning and they would be done before we open.
Oh, okay, that's nice.
Just a doc, just because he was talking about taking down those pine trees and that.
Yeah, he was, I think he thinks they're a little bit endangering of the, the air conditioning unit back there, they're like over topping that perhaps, it doesn't want them to, yes, if they snap, they might do something there, we've talked about it.
Okay. Mr. John, do you have any?
Just a question for historical purposes, are there any historical markers out there? You know, sometimes you plant a tree because someone passed away or just wanted.
There were, and they were on the other side, and they've been moved over to the memorial area of stone, it was a Korean War.
Mass field.
Yeah, with the mass field, there was a Korean War stone there, and maybe a World War II stone as well, but they've been moved.
Okay.
There's no stones at, at the, at the tree area.
That's the oak tree that's in the.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Good, Andy?
Andy Gazanski, Library trustee. We would like to have, if we could, do a state visit with the select board at some point, and what we thought we would do is like, give you three dates, and I don't know what your schedules are, but we would like, like to be able to do it before it's spark, obviously, and we'll put them through Denise, and whenever you can let us know, then we'll try and get together so that we can look at the site and look at everything that's there so that you know what's happening, and this is after the tree's out, so that'll be good too. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. I move to authorize the Public Works Director into a contract with Ryan Tree Service to remove the hickory tree that is near the Lee Library's front door. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No discretion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. See ya. Andy, you're up next.
Okay. The first item I had was the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. They reached out to me a couple of weeks ago. Our attendance has been sparse at their meetings. The annual meeting is coming up on April 24th, and they would like somebody or some bodies from Lee to be there. At present, our representatives, our specific representatives that we appointed to the Community Power Board are Rebecca Hawthorne, and Rebecca has no interest that I'm aware of in continuing in that capacity, and David Benson. I don't believe we've had attendance at any of the meetings. There has been a leadership change, there is going to be an announcement of a, of the slight increase for the fiscal year '26 rates, based on what they've heard from various of utility companies. But we should probably name another selectman or two selectmen to be representative. They will accept the town administrator or town manager too, their meetings are during the day for the most part, so if it's easier for me to attend at least the annual meeting, I'm happy to do that.
What time is it?
I believe it is at night in the morning, and it's.
Where is it?
In San Burton.
Well, San.
San Burton?
The next one is in San Burton at Steel Hill.
That's up north, right?
Well, it's Little Lope Lakes region.
Oh my goodness.
Like you take the next exit after Tilton off of 93.
Sounds like a job for the town administrator. Would you like to take a ride?
Well, I don't mind going to the annual meetings certainly, I don't know that there's any necessity for me, I think regular business meetings, but.
And how long do they last?
I think it lasts six hours, five or six hours.
Six hours?
It's a day.
I think the, the interest is that, you know, as they sold the plan to us, there's likely to be some financial benefit for towns in, not necessarily this year, but next year and the following year, they continue to grow, so I think it's important for us to keep an ear to the ground and know who's doing what and what our opportunities might be.
Are they voting for stuff or what did they just do?
They are going to vote, I believe they're gonna vote for, they have a new CEO, so they're not gonna vote on him, but they are gonna vote for some officers and some other positions within the organization.
And then besides the annual meeting, what are the other commitments?
They have a quarterly meeting beyond that, I believe they have a monthly business meeting you can attend as well.
All right. I might be interested in surveying, but I'm not gonna go for six hours.
Okay.
I have other things to do on that particular day, if it was like, there's a couple hours maybe, but I can't do the whole day, so, because it's probably an hour and a half to get there, six hours and then.
It's about an hour ride to get there.
So.
All right.
So what do you think? Can we send Andy for the annual meeting and then I can be the rep with him?
I think it's a good.
All right.
And if Mr. LeCorus feels left out, I believe you can name two reps, so.
There you go, I'm saying, there's always a backup.
Okay. So let's appoint Andy and myself?
Yes.
And then if one of us can't make it, then you can go, John, how about that?
You can give me a call, that's right.
Oh, okay, all right.
You can give me a call, that's right, if you can find me.
If you can find me. I know where your wife lives, so she should be able to find you.
There you go.
All right. So let's do that.
Well, let's do it.
Okay.
So when you come back, you'll give us a little.
Yes, yeah, they're gonna release an annual report and we can bring that as well.
Thank you.
The next item I had was bank signatory. Right now and for the last four years, we have had at least one select board member listed as a bank signatory, and I have been a signatory on the general fund, because we either haven't had a deputy treasurer or we've had an inactive deputy treasurer, and with the treasurer's away, I have on occasion signed checks that needed to be processed. So I asked TD Bank, our new bank, to do that, and M&amp;T just gave me a handful of signatory forms and said sign up whoever your board would like. TD said, could your board please make a motion that they would like to see a selectman or select people, and the town administrator with that authority, we're not just gonna give you the forms.
So before, all three select people had to sign the things, so that, they don't need that anymore, or?
They don't, and in some cases, all three of you did sign, I think you've been the most consistent person to sign the, the signature card that I've seen, but everybody has always stayed on there.
Okay. Do you want to, you know, the signature card too, or, the thing is if I get hit by a large truck, you know?
Yeah, maybe it's a possibility, yes.
So, if you're okay.
I'm fine.
I move to authorize making the chair Scott Bugby and the vice chair John LeCorus and the town administrator Andy Robertson TD's bank signatories on the town's bank accounts. So I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
And just to clarify, I would only be a signatory on that general fund, not the two other accounts that we all money in.
Okay.
Under miscellaneous, I had just a couple of things, but as Friday and Monday were on, I ended up with more. I'll just briefly mention road projects, we have quite a bit going on in Lee, as I think the board is aware. We're looking at fall of '26 for the Route 152 project to be complete, that bridge will remain as a one lane with lights. The Lee Hook Road, we're looking at fall of '26 for completion of that, although they're hoping to have the bridge open by the end of July, beginning of August, so.
Of next year?
Of '26, yeah, this coming, actually, yeah.
This year?
This year, this year, I get fiscal year and construction projects.
July of '25, they're hoping to have the back.
Right, so this, this coming fall, they're hoping to have both of those bridges open. The longer one is Route 125, Tom and I went to the pre-construction meeting regarding that, and that will actually be the fall of '27 before they're done with that project. It's a little more complex than I realized, they're not replacing the bridge with a culvert bridge, they're taking the culvert out, they're building a temporary bridge, slightly offset to keep two lanes of traffic open, building the real bridge, then removing the temporary bridge, and then they're going to correct the direction of the river that they're going to have to offset when they build the temporary bridge. And there are quite a number of other considerations going into this, ranging from traffic to bats that use a section of trees where they're by the highway as a nesting area and some other environmental concerns, but they're going to be here for a couple of years and speed limit's gonna be lowered to 45 miles an hour and there will be stoppage at times as they progress with this.
So the temporary bridge is two lanes?
The temporary bridge is gonna be two lanes, it's gonna be.
One north, one south?
Yep, it's also gonna be paved, it's a fairly significant temporary bridge, it's gonna take quite a while to build and quite a while to remove, so.
Okay.
I was approached by Brendan McAdams, who is a local tree service here in Lee. Brendan is interested in talking to the board about a potential brush furnace that apparently has a cost of about $400,000, that he has talked with some members of the DPW staff about putting at the transfer station a shared project with his private business in the town. He approached me again today and asked, you know, if we could get on the agenda, I said I would make the board aware of it, but that I really needed to sit down and talk with Mr. Bullock before I brought this as a formal presentation to the board, but didn't want to let you know about the request, it was being discussed.
So you haven't talked to Steve about this yet?
I have not, no.
Okay.
Apparently, the most in-depth conversation Brendan had was with Mr. White.
We've had the conversation and we'll see what Steve thinks. So they would take trees and branches and stuff, what would they do, would they just burn it or they?
It's a smokeless, high heat furnace that basically wood waste from tree work, that sort of thing, road cycling, that's not valuable as fuel, could be run through this.
So he just burns it, he doesn't?
I, I don't know if there's a heat benefit to it, he kept referring to it as a furnace as opposed to just a burning equipment, so I suspect there may be some.
Heat generated?
Yeah, well, we think you do something.
Use it or something.
Okay, so I'll explore a little further and get back to you. The other thing I wanted to mention, and I need to talk to Mr. Bullock about this too, but the doors of the town office are in close to a state of failure. The, the door at the select boards office entrance is not closing properly, in fact, after evening meeting in the building last week, the building remained unlocked until 2:00 AM because that door was left ajar, which you can close it and think you've closed it and it stays ajar, but it also prevented the alarm system from coming on, so we've been talking off and on about fixing that door and the town clerk's door, probably close to two years now, and I think we either, we either need to come to a building understanding or I'm just gonna have to get the doors replaced, and just wanted to give the board a heads up on that.
So those are our responsibilities, are not Mr. Daniel's?
They are. Unfortunately, the doors and the heat are our responsibility with regard to that building, and neither has been particularly reliable since 2021.
So most likely they're commercial doors?
They are not, they are residential doors that have commercial locking mechanisms put in them and commercial arms put on, and then the doors and the door frames have not stood up to the specific commercial use, and I think the, the commercial door mechanism, particularly the top one, has also, is, is too strong for the door.
Because they got caught by the wind, one day when I was.
They get caught by the wind regularly and fly open, as I said, now they won't close, you need to put a shoulder or a foot in, move the door to get it to latch, so. The other part of that would be the town clerk's door, the town clerk has long asked for a door with glass in it of some sort, because that is a solid steel door, very narrow entrance, and people pretty regularly open the door into each other.
No.
Some people withstand the impact just fine, others not so much.
Don't.
But, questions for me?
Just talk to Steve and get us a price and.
I think we're about halfway there, we had some, I got some people that were supposed to give us a price right away and.
So is he thinking, is he thinking about doing residential doors and putting the commercial?
No, we're thinking that they should be at least like commercial doors, I mean, it's not like a grocery store where there are hundreds of people going in and out, but they get enough use.
And it's a place that we just did a commercial door over at the Lamprey, over at the Summersworth thing, so, not cheap.
No. They're not cheap to buy, they're not cheap to install.
Yeah, because that one was with all this stuff, and they even painted it a special color for us, but it was $3,000 for one.
One of the implications, Steve and I had talked about just TPW, maybe installing the doors, and one of the concerns that I discussed with Steve was, I said, we've got an electronic door mechanism on the entire building and alarm buildings, alarm systems, I said, if we have just anybody wire that up and we get broken into or have a fire and the alarms don't go off, that's the first thing our insurance company is gonna ask us, is the certified alarm lock person do this.
Okay, fair enough. Any questions for Andy?
No.
Okay, I'll set. Okay, anything on the consent agenda that anybody wants to pull? Nope? All right, I move to accept if the agenda is presented, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Benson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
There was no man at desk.
I, I found that out.
So this is just for the.
Oh, this is the, the transfer between banks.
Oh.
With a couple of million dollars from M&amp;T to TD, we should have your signature.
Is Denise's personal account, is that? I looked at it a minute, section two, last sentence, can we change the was to were?
Sure. Uh, page, section two?
Section two, last sentence, I think it should be were instead of was. Denise, with all these appointments, what do we still have open?
Oh, I haven't done an evaluation of that yet, but I emailed everyone.
It's obvious.
Yeah.
Maybe for the next meeting, can you bring us a list of what's still open? Thank you.
Do you want to go out and beat the grass?
Well, you know, sometimes people need a little prodding, how about that?
A little prodding, I like that, a little prod. Looks like Danny showed up with a red tie.
When did John Mascarell get sworn in?
Last day.
24?
Fifth.
24?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth?
Yep.
I'm just gonna fill it in.
I don't know how that works, the name change, but.
That's valid, because that's who he was at the time of swearing in, I can just stick that name change in, in there.
Okay.
I look at it, no different than if a woman gets some hair and changes her last name.
You're cutting into my space here, Denise.
I was gonna say, there's not much room.
I think she means to have you sign, but you weren't here at that.
I was here.
So.
As long as two of you are there, that's good.
Well, there isn't two of us on there.
Oh.
Dave hasn't signed up.
There you go, the sign right there.
Clean the files.
Yes. Guess we earned a salary tonight.
If you, give me one second, there are two other things I should mention to the board. I have been monitoring and getting emails back and forth from the Secretary of State and the Health Trust, as you may be aware, the Health Trust and the Secretary of State are in a rather major battle over how the Health Trust provides municipal benefits. The Secretary of State had the Senate introduce Senate Bill 297, which would essentially change the way the Health Trust is organized, is my understanding, and also change what they have to withhold for reserving. The Health Trust is claiming that will put them completely out of the health insurance business. Secretary of State is, as I read it, is looking at it as if they have an unfair advantage in the ability to keep their rates more competitive because of the way they're organized, and that he feels this is risky based on their reserve strategy. I've never gotten physician letters from the Secretary of State on legislation or a particular entity like the Health Trust, but they've been coming fast and furious. That may come to some resolution this week, the Health Trust is saying that if the bill is passed as is, that they will withdraw from the health insurance market and give its members 12 months notice. So that's on the horizon. The other bill that has come back, that hasn't come back, it never really went away, is HB 469 regarding P-DIP funds, and there is a moving foot that has not been announced publicly yet to amend that, to put the language back into the bill, trying to take the ability for municipalities to use P-DIP away and insist that that be handled by commercial banks. There is a lobbying effort afoot to fight back, the bank lobbyists, they have a very strong lobby, the lobbyists on the P-DIP side tend to be town administrators, town managers, and. and a couple of city council members and a couple of selectmen. But I will be, just as soon as I've got some solid information on that, I will be sending that out to you so you can contact representatives. And I did talk to Administrator Selling in Durham, and he has organized in the past trips to the State House to stare aggressively at bank lobbyists, and I think he's getting ready to lead the charge again, so we'll see where that goes. But that has a significant impact on municipal investment if that gets amended.
Are those both in the House still?
The Senate bill has moved to the House on the 297 bill, and the House bill has moved to the Senate. And I believe, they haven't announced a public hearing yet in the Senate for the P-DIP changes, but they are expected to either sometime this week or next week, and everyone is expecting them to return it to the way it was to begin with, which got amended last time around.
Interesting to find out if our Senator Rebecca...
Yep.
How she's sitting on this recently.
Nope, I can surely reach out to her. And I had sent some emails on the initial 297, and also, oh, the other thing that was, wasn't found expedient to legislate it was tabled, was the bill that would prohibit the municipal association from lobbying. That was tabled last week, I believe on Thursday, and it has gone out to the sunset.
If you get time, talk to Rebecca and talk to Eric too, see what...
Yep, I will. And as I said, both myself, I had talked to people, and the Assistant Town Administrator wrote emails to our representatives and Senator Waters as well.
Good, thank you. All right, any other old business, or any old business? You want to do that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. David, do you have a chance to look at the IT? No, not yet.
Not a full copy, you need to get a full copy today.
All right, so why don't we just put that on the agenda for next time?
Put it on the agenda, yeah.
Yep, and make sure Dave has a copy? Because you sent that out a while ago, right?
Yeah, it was probably three weeks ago.
Just make sure you...
That's the IT recovery plan, disaster plan.
All right, any other new business, anything else? Nope? Okay, so I moved to, jeez. I moved it to non-public session, number 11-8, 3, Roman number 2, sections A, C, and L.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Sorry.
David Benson?
Aye.
On the course.
Aye.
Scott Brody, all right, motion passes.
And if I look up there, the last time it was, the P-DIP bill came out of the Senate, and as it came from the Senate, it was a disaster. It would require the P-DIP to essentially put all their money into banks.
Their strong opposition, they still went in.
But then it went to the House, and the House essentially killed it because the House changed that you must do it to, you should try to do it.
I know.
And...
Well, you could ask...
The investment fund managers, they came up and said, "There's only three banks in the entire, the two businesses in the state that meet the requirements." There was a big push, it was all the way banks that pushed this. But none of them have the credit to pay the investments that they need.
Well, you could certainly ask him, put your email list...
I'm going to have to look that up to see where the House go. Why did this start again in the House?
Bye.
Bye.
Oh, it's all bad.
Oh.
Yeah, not, not, it's not bad at all.
He described it as, he latched on his neck and looked up.
He latched on to the dog, and Scott punched it. But yeah, no, the dog's fine.
Oh, good. Both dogs, well, I mean...
Yeah, it only did the one. Oh, yeah. Other dogs, a hundred and eight bombs, get a head on them like that.
He didn't do punctures or anything to the dog, did he?
Didn't go for it.
I bet you they're there, he just, he just couldn't see them.
No, Scott hasn't said anything.
Yeah. I just remember when that happened, I mean, I have to stay on that because if it gets infected, I need to do, too many, really, needed to book that.
Yes, again, the guys, the guys.
With tubes in there.
Guys are assholes.
Yeah.
Because Brian called me up, because he refused to give Brian his name. So I get out there.
I don't want something that will show us all that works.
It's a tourniquet.
Oh. She's just got, got lunge in her teeth or something.
I know. And I think this used to all be on the belt.
What, around here?
Yeah. Yeah, all of it. Feels much better with it up here.
Yeah, don't make me. At the time, my dog is still here. He had one good night, was it Sunday night? And in that, I knew he was, and he goes...
Wow.
He's got night terrors.
Oh my God.
Some kind of anxiety.
Are you kidding me?
Yeah.
Wow.
No, he's always had, he's always been, Bear's always been afraid of it. It's weird. He's afraid of certain things, but then not afraid of things that he should be afraid of.
Right.
And he's got, you know, the hell, you know, he's, he's just, yeah, he's got all the problems. And so all of a sudden, I look, the dog is six. And he does get seizures every once in a while, not, not enough to provide one medication. But we got him Atabian, Atabian, no, not Atabian. Xanax, for the cough, for going in the truck. We had to drive to the end of the road because he was getting so anxious when the car gets...
Very loud.
Yeah. So that works great. And then, out of the blue, he just started waking, not even waking up. Well, yeah, wake up, watch the TV, he's sitting in there, snoring. As soon as we get up, start getting ready, it gets dark, TV goes on. And sometimes it starts downstairs, but most of the time it starts upstairs. Come in, and he'll get on top of me. Droning.
Oh, wow.
Panting, like, like he's in distress.
Wow.
And then he'll do this. With his nails, and scratch me, and pu, and does, does my face, does anything that's near him. And so we went, I went like a week without change of, you know. "Okay, you slept on my, okay, you slept on my..."
Oh, yeah, that's not good.
And so we brought him to the vet, and she needed, you know, blood test, you know, stuff. But what I want to get is hearing and his eyesight checked, because someone said that to me. They work with children, young, young children, and if they can't articulate what's wrong, then it comes out as anxiety. So if he's, if his eyesight, when we turn the lights off, now he can see that. What if it's like just bad?
Right.
And then you turn the lights off, he can't see anything.
Right.
Or the hearing, maybe when we turn the TV on? Because what I do is, if it gets really bad, because last night, I had to bring him downstairs, and I sit on the couch, he, I turn the TV on, and he's instantly just sitting there looking at the TV. And then he calms down.
Well, Lisa needs TV on all the time.
Really?
Right. Every night, the night, because she only sees him Friday and Saturday nights, TV has to be on. I get her to at least set a sleep timer, because I can't.
Oh.
So she'll set when she starts feeling...
She's, ever tried a little...
Yeah, she just, the TV's fine.
Yeah, okay.
And so she'll set a sleep timer for an hour.
And he's out, she's out.
And she's out within five minutes. But I usually, I don't fall asleep as early as she does, so I'll watch the TV, and the TV goes off, I'm...
I know, this thing is crazy. So, but the other, Sunday night, completely slept. Was it Sunday? No, Saturday. Up in the end over, like, he had maybe gotten a Xanax earlier in the day for the, for some reason. I think he started to have panic during the day. Because sometimes it happens during the day. But then that night, no sleeping pills, he slept through the night. He now takes no medicine.
Oh my God.
Which is what I have for sleeping, if I can't sleep. So it's good, I don't have to buy any special bread. But, yeah, so now he's got Xanax, he's got Trazodone, and...
Yeah.
It just gets so bad, I don't want to get him up, but he looks so, he, and his eyes are... And he's like, I mean, he's just, it's bad.
Wow.
So...
I am super lucky with Greta.
But then there's someone who, you know, a freight train goes in the house, and he won't wake up.
That's how Bear is.
And she, he just sleeps.
And she's out in the morning. I have to drag her out to go to bed, and she'll stay right in bed.
That's how Bear is, once he gets asleep. I can't, you know, I go to hell, Steve, and I'm like, Sully's right there, because it's food, food time.
Oh, yeah.
Mom, there's no breakfast. And Bear's just like, he doesn't eat breakfast. That's another, he has irritable bowels, so he doesn't, he's like, yeah, I need to go down there. I have to call him and call him to go inside. But yeah, but he eats dinner, and I have to, it's a process, I have to coax him to eat.
Oh my God.
Yeah, he's not a normal guy.
Right.
It's hard, you never know. So you can put hamburger, or, you can put hamburger, chicken, doesn't matter, right here, and he'll just go.
Wow.
He's even done it to steak before, but not very often. Like, if I really, if he hasn't eaten in three days, I'll go buy a steak.
Right.
But he, we'll go three days, I don't have any breakfast. Except if he has to have a Xanax, that is so weird. It makes him happy. I mean, Xanax is supposed to calm you down and mellow you out, right? It makes him harken, playful, happy and starving.
Really?
He'll eat anything, he's on Xanax. He needs to take a cookie from the transfer station guy up in the end over. He doesn't take a cookie.
Wow.
He has like regular cookies.
My Greta's picking up like fucking donuts, munchkins?
Will you?
She'll eat them. I pull up like, "Oh, munchkin, donut, she want to eat it?" She'll take it, and she'll put it, and I'll, when I clean the truck, I'll find it, the hours are up, I'm busy. Unless it's glazed. She'll eat a glazed munchkin.
It's so bad, oh my God.
She's so spoiled. So spoiled, but whatever.
I know, when I give Sully his food in the morning, it's just regular food, there's not, they have to have, and this, Sully doesn't have to have it. Bear, I have to get him to eat, I have to eat chicken, or hamburger, or pork, or something mixed in, you know, fish, something mixed in, to get him to eat. Or suddenly leave anything. But now, they're accustomed to eating it. So in the morning, when I give Sully just his food, he just kind of looks at it and goes...
Yeah.
Like, I'll eat it, because I, I'll eat anything, but he just kind of looks at me.
Now, like Greta, a lot of times she won't eat her breakfast chow until I get home. I'll get home, get undressed.
I'll sometimes do that.
And then I'll make something for myself for dinner. As soon as I sit down at the coffee table and turn the TV on, she'll get out of the sofa and go in and eat.
And that's breakfast?
That's her breakfast chow.
When does she eat dinner? Does she eat dinner?
Sometimes she doesn't.
Doesn't?
Depends on what time, like tonight, if she does that, I will feed her again.
Right.
But if it's, you know, if I get home at five, five-thirty, if she does it, then I'll feed her at like seven, and she'll eat again.
Yeah.
So, and she's funny, because she won't walk straight to her bowls. She goes around the dining room table, and she's sneaking up on it.
That's what Bear does, he will not eat. If we, the only way I can get him to eat is I have to force a couple pieces of the meat into his mouth. And we call it get his juices covered.
Yeah.
Gets in his mouth, and he goes, "Mm, wasn't so bad."
Yeah.
But he still, he will not go if you tell him, or if you try to get him, no. He'll just sit there and go. And then once we take our minds off, and we watch TV, cooking dinner, whatever, he'll go, he'll get up, and he'll sneak over to it. The psychological warfare goes on with this dog.
So cats drink out of the same water, just like Greta does. And I have, I have a thing like this for, it's a stand.
Oh.
So the gray cat, Georgia, she can stand up and drink it. The black cat, and every time Greta goes to eat, the black cat jumps up onto the stand and will drink water while Greta's eating.
I thought, what, did Greta just let...
Oh, she doesn't care. Nope, she is so good with the cat, both cats. She's a good big sister.
My, they do not, well, it's not that they don't get along. She'll walk around like this, and they walk around her like that, but there's no interaction.
Jack will attack Greta's tail all the time. Yeah.
Because you have a cat now, you're great...
Yeah, that's Jack.
Jack.
Yeah, that's Jack.
Yeah.
He's a little tuxedo. Actually, he's getting big, but he loves it outside. Loves it. He'll go out, if you call him like a dog, he comes back back in. He is funny. He stays in the backyard, you have a backyard fenced in.
Oh, it is?
Yep.
Oh, good.
Yep, it's all fenced in. So, he'll just go out there and hang out and watch the chipmunks and swirls. He goes in the doghouse. I have a video, he brought my granddaughter a stick. She was calling him, and he had a little twig about this big.
A cat?
Yep, and he comes up on the deck, and she, "Oh, did you bring me a stick?" And he brought it and placed it right at her feet. That's unbelievable. Because he's funny, always attacking a little bit. She was just sitting, just sitting there, looking all regal in the middle of the rug in the living room, and he was on the couch with Lisa, and I see him looking at her, and then I see his back feet going, boom, he dives, grabs her by the neck, they flip over, she gets up hissing.
Oh my God.
And that's, oh, that's all you hear all the time. You hear running, and then she'll turn around and take off from him again. It's hilarious to watch them.
Oh, that's so cute.
Unless it's three o'clock in the morning.
Yeah.
Then it's not so funny. And I told her, I said, "You got to shut your bedroom door when you bring him to bed. We can't have that."
We know. And that's when they always went, "Oh, Lily," my only female animal that I've ever had in my entire life, you know, which I'll never do again, runs to the house. You know, and like, you can hear all the scratching, goes, and then you go, dun-dun, and she's... Dun-dun-dun-dun, I don't have, I can't believe she does it, she's sweet with a little run around. And I have to cut back her food, I give her diet food, I give her, oh my God, she's still...
Yeah, and Georgia, she sleeps right at my feet, every night. That's where she sleeps. Every once in a while, I'll feel her launch off the bed, she'll get the zubies.
Oh.
And bite herself, and she'll go out, and then I hear her scratching toes, and then she'll go... She'll come in, jump up on the bed, turn real quick, boom, off the bed again. I'm like, "Oh, you fuckers." Then I get up, I put the gate across the... she'll come in, jump up on the bed, turn real quick, boom, off the bed again. I'm like, ooh, fuck. So then I get up, I put the gate across the, the door so she can't get back in the bedroom.
She's a junket?
No, no, she's a junket.
That's weird.
Yeah.
Now, the other cat in the other room doesn't hear this and start going nuts?
She's down the hall, so I don't know. But he's got a wicked loud meow. Wicked loud, like he'll go to the back door and meow cause he wants to go up. She's got, like a freaking dog. He'll, he'll walk real slow up to Georgie, Georgie'll turn, he'll stand up.
Yo, I love that.
Do this, it's freaking, oh my god.
Oh my god, do you have that on Vage video?
I think my daughter might have a video of that. It's absolutely hilarious. Like she was, the coffee table's here and the shelf, so she was laying on the shelf and he was coming at her. And then at a certain point, you couldn't see him anymore, then all of a sudden he comes up above the table. Oh my god, it's just a riot to watch those two. And then he'll attack her and he'll come out with a mouthful of fur.
Oh my god.
A mouthful of fur.
Lily's been grabbing my feet at night, I must get restless and then my, and all of a sudden the other night she grabbed my foot and woke me up and I was like
Yeah. Georgie'll do that every once in a while, not often, but a lot of times she'll come up and she'll, like when I'm home, alone, we just grab a, Greta will sleep on Lisa's side, and Georgie'll come up and she'll curl or lay on top of Greta and go to sleep. Yeah.
That's so cute. No, with Bear, if there's any kind of eye contact between Bear and Lily, like Lily will look at him and this one, and then Bear will go, and then he'll chase her. He'll jump, like really hard and fast at her. And she's terrified and she runs upstairs, she's terrified of them. She doesn't understand that she has all the power.
Right. So if Jack and Lil Bit are going at it, and really going at it, Greta, it has had her feel, she fucking leaps off the sofa at him and does this and pounces down and and then they take off and then she gets back up on the sofa. That's funny.
It was too fun.
Yeah, yeah. She's trying to nap.
Yep. That's funny. They are cute. I miss my Reggie, the one kid that trusted me.
Yeah.
He was the best kid, he was like a dog. He'd walk around the neighborhood with us.
Yeah.
Walk the dogs, you know. He was always on everyone's roof.
Oh, Jesus.
So funny. I'd be driving home into the neighborhood from work, driving in and I'd look up and I'd be like, my cat's on my neighbor's roof down the street, and so I get out and I'm like, Reggie, and he's like, get down from there. We're talking a tall, I, I, I don't even know how he got up there or how he got down, but he used to do that all the time. He was crazy.
Jack's been getting up on counters and tables, which I don't tolerate that. So we got a squirt bottle. And now he will go in the shower. When Lisa takes a bath, he right in there with her, but he does not like that squirt bottle.
That's weird.
Does not like it.
No.
Like out in the rain, getting over the weekend, yeah, come in soaked. But he squirted that squirt bottle, he hates it. And I'm deadly with it. It's like, I, I can get him right in the side of the head with it.
My cats have never, not gone on. I go from, you know, I've had cats, cat, cat, and they just don't get on the counters.
Move it? Never, never once. This little fucker, he's destructive. You know, he's, he got up on the, we have this stand underneath the TV's mounted on the wall and there was a little plant on there.
Oh, does he feel like?
Fucking, just pull it right out.
Oh.
Yeah, he came, in the kitchen with it and small. Like, ooh, little fuck. Now, I yell at him, I clap my hands real loud and it scares him. You know, my granddaughter.
You're a bad boy, you should do that.
I'm like, oh yeah, he's gonna stop. So we got this, Lisa's like, I bought this clicker thing online, you're supposed to click it, blah, 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 yeah. It came in and Emily started reading, she goes, no, this is to reward good behavior. When they do something you want them to do, you click.
Oh, you can train dogs with those.
Yeah.
To stop things, but then they usually, yeah.
But like I told her, you know, she's, I, she's talking about him going outside, cause Lisa's like, you know, maybe he was up too much. And she goes, oh, but he loves it. I'm like, what do you know about ticks?
You gotta put the stuff on.
She's like, um, what should I do? He's gonna need a shot. The ticks stop.
Well, it's just a, it's either a thing on the back of the neck?
Yeah.
Or a pill.
Yeah. So, but that's your responsibility. You can pay for that, I'm not.
And, and she, if that's gonna happen, she has to do it. He'll bring the ticks in and give them to the other ones.
Yep, so.
I love him, forget me. How's your stomach?
Been great.
It just went on?
Well, I cut soda though. So that's just, I don't know, I stopped drinking soda. So I've been drinking water and powders. Um, I cut back on fried foods, um, sweets, trying not to eat late at night, so I don't know if that did it or it was just a gallbladder acting up and it stopped. I don't know. But like I had, um, two pieces of meatloaf for lunch today, that's all I had, meatloaf. And as soon as I ate, my stomach going cause it's just sitting, it's like, is that your stomach? I'm like, yeah.
I'm having a wicked pain in that spot again and I'm like, god damn it. And all I had, I had normal breakfast, but I had, I had chips and a sandwich for lunch, that's nothing.
Right.
Turkey. So I don't know what it is, but.
Yeah, I don't either. So.
It's been gone too.
Depending on the time I get out of here, I may not even need it, it's too late.
Does that keep you up?
I just don't like eating late, cause it does, yeah. I think I sleep worse if I eat late.
I know, I eat late at home. Not usually a lot, but something. God, I used to, I used to, remember when these days used to go like
Oh, I know.
Sometimes at night, I'd go home and I'd be ready to just, I don't know. I would eat and drink.
Hmm. Yep.
Tuesdays were not a good day for me. Oh man. That was back in the Carol, remember the Carol days? The day of the days?
Yeah, the seed of woman.
Why did we go that late? I don't know why we did.
Cause they just drag things out.
I know, but John was, was John pregnant?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
He's, I mean, it's hard to prove. He's beginning, he's not signing, he's not supposed to be signing. He shouldn't be here. He's been up at six thirty. Mm-hmm, I can't right.
I mean, I can understand that, you know. Trying to, you know, play the good game. I just don't know.
I can't look at him. Is he impressed? Is he?
But, um, this was weird. The, and I bet you it's related. The guy that came to do the carpet up in the indoor. He came for the carpet company, I can't remember which one, Empire or something. And he came in, I didn't notice that at first. He pointed it out because I can't, and I can't remember why, but he turned around and he had a scar that went all the way around my legs. And I was like, whoa. Okay, this is the first time I've seen that, what happened? And he's like, oh, I got brain tumors, probably. He was military, same age. And he's
Which one?
Yo, you go first. You go. Yeah.
We went down there. Um, I'm sure
Am I supposed to quit?
Yeah.
Oh. Oh, someone left their water thing. That, was that Mark? Mark left his water, that was where he was sitting, right?
Oh yeah. No, we'll leave it there, he comes back up later.
Oh. No.